Call to order, Lawrence Common Council, Public Assembly Hall, Common Council meeting. Today is February 15th, 2023. The time is 6:35. And we'd like to start the meeting.
Sean, can you do prayer today?
We'll start with a pledge of allegiance in prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, help us today as we address some of the city's issues and work on developing solutions to our city and its growth in a positive way, in a way that benefits all of our citizens.
Amen. Thank you. Everyone is here. We have a quorum. So everyone is here. Do we have any comments of council members or special recognitions? Counselor Russell off.
Thank you, President. I would again like to thank Ms. Ruffler and our zoning department and Chief Woodward of the Police Department for their hard work in eliminating some overnight parking in my district that was illegal. And we're resolving those issues. And I really want to thank them for working hard to get that done.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank Eric Martin for his role in getting the Little League parade for, I think it's in April. And they used to come down the sidewalk, but now they're going to block off Harmon Way and still have a full-blown regular regulation parade. And they were kind of concerned about some of the costs. And I understand that they're going to get waived. So Eric, thank you for all that, wherever you're at. And I'm sure they'll certainly appreciate it.
That's cool. No, it's great. I remember those as kids. All right.
Mr. President, I do have a quick question for our council attorney. It's in regards to one of the things, unfinished business for proposal number two. Really quick, just before we move forward, if that clarifies.
I don't know. Hold on. I'm just making sure. I want to give it to you. I just want to make sure it's in the right part of the agenda. I'm sorry.
Yeah. If I put it, if I'm too early, I just, I wanted to make sure I have a question and I just wanted, if I'm, if I need to wait till that-
Is it a question to one of these items on the agenda?
Yes.
Let's hold it, let's hold it for there to get the-
For that, okay.
Please, I'll give you the first person I go to.
You're good. Thank you.
Yes. We'll make sure. Any special rec- residence? Yes, sir.
I do have. And these are just questions that I'm sure, hopefully with the new era of transparency, that we'll get to understand on proposal number three. I spoke with the controller about this, and it will likely make us late on our debt payments. We haven't had any issues with this in the past. So I'm just, I'll be interested to hear what's come up and why we're doing this. On proposal number four, seems pretty micromanagement.
I'm gonna stop. I'm gonna stop you. It's my meeting. I'm gonna stop you.
Council rules allow me five minutes to interrupt.
I'm going to stop you because I'm going to give you an opportunity to talk all about this when the resolutions are on the agenda. So I, I, I'm gonna call for order. I'm calling for order. I respect you. Please, respect the office.
Respect the council rules, which allows me five minutes of-
You know, we're gonna, hey, meeting, we're gonna call a recess right now. We're gonna call a recess. How about that? We'll call the meeting back to order. We'll keep the agenda moving forward. And so we'll go to the signing of the vouchers. Is there any comments on the signing of the vouchers?
Mr. Chair, for the vouchers, I would make a motion to approve the vouchers with the exception of Howard Companies for, it says 2022-2 CCMG resurfacing for $52,937 until we have a clearer idea of 2022 expenditures.
What's the name of the company again?
Howard Companies.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
It's been a, it's been a motion, it's been seconded by show of hands, all in favor. Close? Pass the seven two. All right, well, you have to ask me something. I don't care. All right. Next thing on the agenda is unfinished business. Oh, do we have any reports from our, from committee, from Finance Committee? I don't see it on the agenda, but we did have a Finance Committee.
We have to put it on mid-march, but we can't, they're gonna need it.
I'll go ahead and give the, I mean, it's the next item on the agenda.
Yes, so let's go ahead and-
Mr. President, we, the Finance Committee meeting obviously just met right before our regular council meeting. We discussed Resolution Number Three, which is the approval of statement of benefits of the Lord Corporation. And that was recommended with a do pass out of Finance Committee. They're here today in the audience if we have some more questions. But I believe this one's a little bit time sensitive, so I wouldn't mind moving forward with this tonight because they have some other committees to appear before, and our, our approval is holding up those, those appearances.
I would, I would, it's a resolution, so I would entertain-
Go ahead and have Kathy introduce it.
Yes, go ahead and read the resolution by title, please.
Resolution Number Three, 2023, introduced by Counselor Freeman. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, approving the statement of benefits of the Lord Corporation, the subsidiary of Parker Hanifin.
Mr. President, I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Seconded, all right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor by show of hands?
Are we not going to have a discussion on that?
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. So sorry. So sorry. Any discussion?
I did have a question.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that this is in a TIF district, I understand? Is that correct? In a TIF district?
It is, I believe.
Do we have-
Come on up, so if you got any questions, he can clear that for you.
And I apologize for coming to the meeting late because I'm sure this was all covered.
No problem. Thank you, President Giles. Commissioner Wells, I'll take your question.
I understand that this factory is in a TIF, is right currently in a TIF district or moving into a TIF district. I guess my, my question is, when or if that this company will be contributing to the tax base for the city?
Sure. Great question. So the first thing you know, this is in the Pendleton Pike Economic Revitalization Area, which was formed as a TIF to facilitate the TIF in Pendleton Pike. So it's been longstanding in the Pendleton Pike TIF. I don't remember how many years are left in that TIF, but it's really irrelevant. Pardon? Go through 2037, the actual revitalization area. This is the former Southworks Metal Building, so it's not a new building. It's a vacant building that the city would desperately like to keep filled. We think this is a great corporation to do that as a partner. There's, we are only offering between us and Develop Indy a six-year tax abatement. So you'll actually get more taxes into the TIF after next year because it's about a 15, 17% decline every year. So it's a pretty short TIF as TIFs go. As far as the contribution to the TIF, it's a six-year abatement. But the actual, the actual TIF itself runs through 2037. So all the revenues captured during that time period will go to infrastructure and other redevelopment projects. That's been longstanding.
And why?
And I might say, keep in mind that this, this is not going to impact the tax base once, one at all because it's already in the TIF.
Right. I understood that. I was just curious as if, if it would ever start producing revenue for the city at some time.
It'll come totally out of the TIF. All that development area comes totally out of the TIF in 2037.
And may I ask, and I know this was covered, I think, in the prior meeting, but I forgot, what exactly does this company's plans on doing there?
Primarily EV parts.
Yeah, these are components for development materials for EV assembly.
It's primarily EV-related components. Electric vehicle.
Okay, for like electric vehicles.
And there are no emissions coming out of this plant. There will be no nighttime noise. I might point out to the, to the group, as was discussed earlier, they have less employees and less traffic than Southworks did. So I can't see that this is going to have any adverse effect on the city as it was designed for years ago.
How long has that building been empty?
Not very long, about a year. About a year.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, may I ask just one really quick question of the Lord personnel? I understand from the previous meeting that 20 to 30 semi-trucks per day in and out shipping. So this material, and I understand you're going to wrap it and it will be very stable within those semi-trucks. However, I didn't hear, and maybe I missed it, whether or not this material, the toothpaste, so to speak, is flammable, inert? Should we be concerned, given the issues in Ohio and Pennsylvania right now about collisions and fire?
Certainly top of mind, given what happened in East Palestine. The materials we're shipping, I do not recall any flammable materials that we are shipping. I can certainly say with confidence that the majority of the volume is certainly not flammable, so our lead products are not. So I would not anticipate anything to the scale of that disaster. You know, we, we are shipping in DOT certified drums. The material is non-flammable. And yeah, I would not anticipate anything to that scale.
Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none. We'll call for vote. All in favor? By show of hands? Those opposed? Seeing none?
Thank you very much.
All right, next item on the agenda is proposal number one, amending the Lawrence Municipal Code to remove no parking zones along Otis Avenue. You have some, uh, say anyone here?
You want me to read it by title or you read it?
Yeah, you can read it by title.
Proposal number one, 2023, introduced by Counselor Chavlot. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council amending the Lawrence Municipal Code to remove no parking zones along Otis Avenue.
All right. Any discussion?
I have a question.
It's still in code, right? It's still in code.
Actually, I didn't ask for a motion first. I had to ask for a motion first.
I don't think they met yet.
It's in commit.
Still in code.
We can't do anything on it, although-
Yeah, my apologies. I'm sorry. Yeah, my apologies.
I'm sorry. Can I ask a question or?
Yes, yes, please.
Just curious, is this Otis Avenue portion by the parade grounds? Would that include that area?
Does anyone here who'd be able to have that information?
Can you repeat the question? I didn't hear it.
I'm sorry?
Can you please repeat the question? I didn't hear it. I'm sorry.
I wanted to know if this, if I'm thinking of Otis Avenue as the one that goes along Staret Building and then along the parade grounds. And what I was curious, if this is in fact going to remove the no parking signs that are currently there by the parade grounds? That would be north of that church, whatever that church is.
I, I'm not sure if that's helpful in talking with Trey, the city engineer. These are just temporary no parking that we set up for the purple line construction on Otis Avenue. So I believe it's just right there where the bus stop facility will be, and it allows them now that the construction that they needed was complete to park there again.
It says 105 feet west of Wheeler.
The other parts of our Otis Avenue.
So it won't be the entire-
105 feet west of Wheeler at Wheeler Road.
Just 105 feet.
That's what it says in the proposal.
Thank you, Kathy.
Oh, you didn't sign it to the document.
No.
But it needs a public hearing. It's going to be March 6th.
Okay. All right, is any other, is that fine? So this is still a code? We have a code meeting scheduled sometime soon?
I have not scheduled one.
Okay. All right, well, we'll get that scheduled and get that approved. All right, moving on to the next unfinished item, which is proposal number two. Want to read it by?
Proposal number two, 2023, introduced by Counselor Giles Incevis. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana appropriating additional funds and amending the 2023 budget with respect to the general fund.
So we have a public hearing on March 6th for that? And then? After the public hearing on March 6th, then we can decide it to two?
You did.
It's in finance.
It's in finance.
You did not get, you didn't address it to that, did you?
I didn't, I don't think, was this assigned? It wasn't on the agenda. Okay.
I don't remember it being, I don't remember it being signed to a committee.
It's due on the 6th.
I know it said it was. He assigned it to finance.
That's the last, the last, I know, I signed it to finance the last meeting.
Because the only thing we wanted on finance was Resolution Three tonight, right?
I think we missed it, but that's okay.
Okay.
I know Lawrence has a question.
Okay, and so then we can go-
We gotta wait till March anyway.
It's all put down that you signed it to finance.
We gotta wait till March.
All right, so we'll go ahead and schedule. Counsel Russell, please.
Thank you. I just had a quick question for our attorney. And that, just with moving forward with this proposal, as we know, as we know, this, this proposal is asking for an appropriation of a quarter of a million for legal fees. However, according to the, the letter that we got on our email from Mr. Bosma, that we were all included on, he brought up something on state statute and saying that the council doesn't have the authority, which I'm still just trying to read and understand, so please clarify. I haven't seen the rebuttal yet on this, so I just wanted to bring up the question before we approach it anymore, just for my clarification, that if we were to vote yes moving forward on this for the appropriation and, excuse me, if we voted yes on this question for this appropriation and it's said to be against state law, would the members voting yes be liable in any way for violating state statute? I just want to make sure that I'm aware before we go into voting or just, just to have a clarification, just because I haven't seen that, that response email yet, so I just wanted to, as a council member, just know what I'm voting for.
Sure, I'm happy to talk about that. Counselor Russell told us some of it, frankly, I had hoped not to talk about in a public meeting. Here we go. We did respond, Bose McKinnney and Evan did respond and copy all council votes on how we believe that that legal interpretation of the action that the council took in December of 2022 to transfer the $250,000 that is, was in the council's 22 budget was legal and appropriate at the time that it was done. And also noted as part of that, that some of Mr. Bosma's own clients do special transfers at special meetings. Happens all the time, everywhere. And it's not what, in our opinion, the statute says or what it means. So our opinion at Bose is that what the council did with its own council budget in December is valid and should stand. Because the administration and its lawyers decided to fight the council on that and questioned the validity of that action, we are essentially attempting to redo it. When we were told by the mayor, and he was, also said it in his deposition, that he was supporting the transfer so that we could fund the budget investigation, we thought that meant that we were supposed to try again to do the transfer. And then we hear again that they're blocking the transfer and they're blocking the appropriation. So it seems that regardless of which way we turn, we get told that this council cannot fund the budget approach, or the budget for an investigation it clearly has the authority to do. I don't think that's what the law means, and I think it's a clear violation of checks and balances. Would you be personally liable? Have I researched that question? No, and I'm happy to do it. At the end of the day, if you have concerns, since you voted for, against everything else we've done related to the budget, feel free. Do I have a concern that you all would be personally liable? I don't, because you all have bonds on what you do that, for the most part, would cover you in the event that were to occur. And I'm not saying this is that situation. Again, I haven't spent a lot of time trying to research that issue. We're just trying to move forward and get to the bottom of the budget issues from '22 and figure out what happened. And, and we get, we've, we're assured we got all the documents, and I got additional documents at 4:15 today with another deposition scheduled for tomorrow. Just doing the best I can. I hope that answers your question.
Well, I appreciate your response. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so moving right along, because this is assigned to committee and we're waiting on a public hearing, so we'll move the agenda right along. Thank you. All right. Sorry, Counsel, wasn't you? I'm sorry, I thought you, thought you said something. I don't think I gave you-
You're sitting there.
Okay. All right, heading on to new business. Consideration of council appointments to the Fire Merit Commission. We're gonna, you-
Open up for nominations.
Yeah, open up for nominations, please. So we'd like to open up for nominations for the merit board. Do you have anyone for the Fire Merit Board?
I'd like to nominate Desmond Woods.
This is who's there now. Do you want to nominate?
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Damon Burns.
Damon Burns. Anyone else? Any other nominations?
Two, one.
One.
All right, seeing none?
Close nominations.
Yeah, so we're close nominations now? Thank you. And we'll start with the first name, which is Mr. Desmond Woods. Okay? So the first, so I-
Everybody gets one vote for those votes.
The ballot probably would have been easier.
I know.
Let's do the ballot. I think it's easier. Can we do the ballot?
Yeah, I took him to my office, so.
Just say, all those in favor of Desmond Woods, raise your hand. And say, all in favor of Damon Burns, raise your hand. You get one vote.
One vote.
And then give me a minute to write down the counselors.
And just, just, just for my clarification, is Mr. Burns, he's our current appointment, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Burns, our current appointment. All right.
Sorry, I'm sorry. What was the name of the current?
Damon Burns.
Burns. Damon Burns.
Okay.
Okay. So. All in favor of Mr. Desmond Woods, please raise your hands.
Are you opposed?
No. All right. All in favor of Mr. Damon Burns, please raise your hands. All right?
Seven.
Passes. Mr. Damon Burns, thank you for your service and we appreciate you.
Next time, we'll just do ballots for the next one.
Yeah, it's easier. It's easier.
I knew there was a reason I did it.
Yes, it's clumsy. We're working through it.
Yeah.
All right. The next item on the agenda for new business is proposal number three, 2023. Read it by-
Proposal number three, 2023, introduced by Counselor Denny. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, amending Title III, Article I, Chapter I, Section II of Municipal Code regarding pre-approved payment of claims.
We'll assign that to finance. Next item on the agenda is proposal number four, 2023?
Proposal number four, 2023, introduced by Counselor Denny. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, amending Title I, Article I, Chapter II, Section 12 of Municipal Code regarding common council approval on expenditures of professional service contracts.
We'll be assigning that to finance as well. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number Five, 2023?
Resolution Number Five, 2023, introduced by Counselor Denny. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, authorizing the transfer appropriations between major budget classifications.
We'll also be assigning that to finance as well. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number Six, 2023?
Resolution Number Six, 2023, introduced by Counselor Denny. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, approving the Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors LLC contract to develop a comprehensive financial plan.
We'll be also assigning that to finance as well.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
On the finance, I have a quick question, if it's able to be asked.
Yes. Resolution Six, yes, please. I'll give you a-
Resolution Six. When we talked with the contract, would somebody from Baker Tilly be able to come to the finance meeting so we can just, like, be able to speak with them in person as well in regards to the contract?
Sure. We'll be able to make it. Yes.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is, oh, that's Resolution Number Seven?
Resolution Number Seven, 2023, introduced by Counselor Denny. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, approving the Cronin Associates contract for accounting services to review the city's 2022 financial records as part of the council's budget investigation.
On Resolution Seven, I would like to entertain a motion for, a motion on this one tonight. This, so if we can get a motion?
Can I ask a question about this one, too?
Let's get a, can I get a motion first and then ask?
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm asking, no, I'm asking. I'm still making sure I'm doing it right, too.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, and then we're good.
Second.
Okay, so it's been, been a motion made by Chavis, seconded by?
Denny.
Denny.
Now discussion?
Discussion, Counselor.
Thank you, I'm sorry for jumping in.
No, 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 please.
I just, my, my question with this one, with going into another contract, like, I guess the only thing that I would just want to bring up, and I understand the nature, we're trying to get to the bottom of everything, I think the only thing I would like to just bring up as a concern, as a, like, as a counselor and a constituent, is we're trying to find ways to save money, and I feel like we keep going into more and more contracts. And I just, I'm starting to feel like spreading ourselves thin a little bit. And I, I just want to know with this, if, if we have the funding want to know with this, if, if we have the funding for this, because I feel like we're just, we're spending a lot of money, and I just am concerned. So that's my question, just on the Finance part of it. I just want to make sure, I mean, I understand, I just, I would be a little bit more comfortable if we were able to talk about this in Finance.
I'm going to assign it to Finance Committee, but I will.
Well, you have a vote.
Well, we can, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Joe, sorry, we're going to vote on this tonight. But one thing I will say to you, and I want, you know, spirited discussion, guys, from everyone, when you were concerned about spending the money, I wish that we wouldn't have to spend the money on any of these things. I was under the, I thought that we had moved $3.6 million from the 2021 budget, and I was not aware that the 20, that the budget reverted in '22 until October, November?
November.
November. So now at this time, and I was told that the reason that it reverted was because we didn't offer some line item and the button wasn't pushed. And so there's some timeline issue. So for me, personally, this is Terrell, Counselor Giles speaking, I support this resolution so that we can get some clarity. I hope so that we can restore confidence, and that we can restore confidence in our citizens that this is true. Now, when you talk about spending money, and we're spreading thin, one of the things that we just reverted back to, what we stopped was a bond. That's a lot more expensive than finding the facts. It has a long-term, long-term deals with that. So this is a fact-finding from my perspective, and I would be open to anyone else sharing their perspectives of why, or let's have a, let's have a discussion on this. This is very fair. President, I think Counselor, uh.
Just had a quick parliamentary question. On a resolution, first reading, doesn't it require suspension of the rules before we vote?
No.
Not a resolution?
Yeah, I, I asked that before, too. Thank you.
Just want to clarify.
Mr. President, I read the supplemental, I guess, from this company, and this is all new to me. I did, in reading it, they said that they bill by the hour, but they did not define what that hourly rate is, or what we might possibly expect. I think Counselor Russell brought a good point, is how much is this going to cost? I mean, we're, we're looking to hire Baker Tilly, we're looking to hire our, our law firm, for what, another $25,000, I think it was, or $50,000. And now, how much is this going to cost?
Well, I, I, I will respond to this, that, because I agree with you. You know, I don't like to spend money. Remember this, we asked, we requested, and we asked for records, and we've had, and they're spending a buck, every time Mr. Bosma sends an email, he's a very expensive attorney. And so they're fighting us, and they can just give it to us. So now we have to go and spend money to get the answers, but they could just give it to us. And they could have told us that the, that the budget reverted a year before, when it did, but I don't know about you, they didn't tell me. And so I don't know what's going on, and I don't know, that's just, you know.
Well, I.
I just wanted to address, there, there are hourly rates in the contract that you have, at least there are in the version that I have.
From this?
For Crowe, I'm sorry, Crowe. There, there are hourly rates in that contract.
Okay, I guess I didn't see the contract, because what I saw was like a supplemental, and they, they said that they would bill like an hourly rate, but they didn't say how much.
But if you read on, there are hourly rates, specifically per hour for each person that would be affected in the contract.
Can you tell me how much that is with that?
I'm trying to pull it up, sir, but I'm having some, I just.
I read it, and I didn't see it.
To this point, I want to say two things. One is, I specifically personally asked Crowe, who works with municipalities all over the state, and knows that you all have price sensitivity concerns, that if they're, look into the 2022 budget and expenditures was approaching $10,000, and they were not complete, you let me know so that I can advise you. I by no means think this budget investigation should cost $250,000. But I do think that the council is entitled to the funding that it was allocated in 2022, which was $250,000 and some odd cents. That was yours, it is your right to use it as you see fit, and I object to anyone trying to stop you as the fiscal body from doing that. That said, we continue to get documents, we continue to have difficulty getting transparency, and that has an effect on the bottom line, which I can't control and which your accountants can't control. I also want to note that we didn't hire Baker Tilly for this review of 2022 because they had already done work for the council, and they do work for the city utilities, so they might not be seen as being independent. Crowe has no business relationship at all with the city prior to this, and therefore, I believe, they would be seen as an independent entity, an objective entity. So that's why we went there, and that's why we have more than one CPA firm listed on this agenda. One is doing the traditional work they've done for the council, that's Baker Tilly. The other is addressing the budget investigation issues. I hope that clarified.
Can you say that last part again? Just, I missed that last sentence you just.
Crowe, Crowe's contract is related to the 2022 budget investigation. So one is looking back, and the other is looking forward.
Okay.
And then just for, since you brought it up, I just want to, for transparency's sake, it's in the contract, project manager is the highest on the list, and it's 275, senior consultant is two, no, partners are 275, project managers 230, senior consultants 205, staff accountants 175, support personnel 100. I can personally say I pay my accountant more than 175 an hour. That's very fair. Yeah, but that's really true. So.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Is there a possibility that these companies, Baker and Tilly, and in particular this Crowe's, would have any idea on just any kind of a budgetary number where this may end up being, or?
It would be nice if they would just give us the information, and we wouldn't even have to hire them. I mean, it would be nice from this meeting, would you make a request to the administration to hand over the information, and we won't have to spend a dime?
I totally concur with that, I really do. I'm, you know, I'm not on the Finance Committee, I.
I mean, you're a counselor, you can make that request.
And I totally concur. I, you know, I've seen council meetings for the last 20 years, I've never seen anything quite like this.
I asked, in the last council meeting, I asked for transparency, and so I'm asking other counselors if they would like to do the same.
Counsel, can I make a comment, please?
Yes, please.
President?
Oh, yes, yes, please.
Um, yeah, none of us have seen anything like this because this hasn't happened. So every year, the budget is submitted as approved by the council, and it wasn't last year. And that is why we are where we are today. And until we have a full investigation and a forensic accounting examination of what happened, I can't, nor do I believe anyone sitting up here can attest to anything that happened in 2021, unless you were involved and you had full knowledge all along.
Because we didn't. Anyone else? Call for a motion.
You have a motion in a second.
Second, I'm sorry.
It's your vote.
Motion in a second. Vote for approval. All in favor by a show of hands. Those opposed?
One upstate.
Upstate, one upstate.
Seven to two, wait, seven?
Six, two, one.
Six, two, one. I appreciate you guys' cooperation today with this meeting. It was a choppy one, it was a rough one, and it's a work in progress, and I thank you guys truly. We're going to get to the bottom of this. Meeting adjourned.